The world.
Yeah.
Member Murphy?
Here.
Member Moran?
Here.
Member Ramon?
Here.
Members Giraud?
Here.
Member Cartel?
Here.
Carter?
Here. All right. It doesn't appear that there are any public comment regarding other issues, but not tonight. Um, there's no minutes to approve. We do have a quorum present. Uh, I know Mr. Cartal has stated his reason, which is one of the acceptable ones for not being here. Jim, what is your reason for not being here tonight?
Hey, sorry, guys, I'm on work travel again, but I'll be in there on Thursday.
Okay, then we have a motion to allow them to be part of this hearing tonight. We have a second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, then you guys will be members of the hearing tonight. You can't hear, let me know. This will be hearing for case twenty-four zero zero seven seven. It's in Mia. Uh, application in Downers Grove Township. Say request for a conditional use for a planned development in the R four zoning district. Seeking ten detached and sixty-one attached dwelling units. A fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two square foot divisible shopping center. And two places of assembly buildings that will total approximately fifty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-three square feet. To be used for religious services, study, education. With the following exception, the request is to increase the height from thirty-six feet to approximately forty-seven feet. It is a piece of property that's approximately twenty-four point six three acres. It's on water and sewer. It was published in the Daily Herald on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. The comments, building has no objection. Do dot says it's not in their jurisdiction. Health Department has no objection. Stormwater has no objections. Public Works has a concern that as it owns the sanitary sewer and water mains in the area. That it's possible that there could be a problem with the construction that'll need to be addressed at the time of construction if it's approved. Darian has no comments or reached filed documents regarding their objection. Are they on soon tonight?
Not sure.
All right. Well, mine has no comments. Downers Grove, no comments. The township highway department has a concern that it's the possible runoff. Will add to the existing flooding problems experienced by the Timberlake community. Tri-state fire, no comments. School District one eighty, School District eighty-six, no objections, and the Forest Reserve filed something also. Having said that, um. Why don't we start? Petitors represented tonight, you have any witnesses?
We do, sir.
Why don't they all stand and be sworn in?
Would you raise your hands, please? You do silently swear affirm the testimony about to give at this class, not hearing with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Okay, Mr. Wu Kian, why don't you begin?
We have, uh, the bill, you can have L U E T K E H A N, some have the applicant. Uh, in front of you, we have provided each of you a packet of our exhibits. I think it's one through seven, but there's two fours, a four and a four A. Uh, the first exhibit is the survey, which I know is the thing we. We have every year where we have to bring the hearings. Um, I represent Chin Maya Mission, Chicago, which I'll call Chin Maya, which is an online not-for-profit religious organization located in unincorporated rural. As I said, the survey is number one, site plan is number two, which is in your packet. We have that on the board here as well. The project is located in an R four zoning district on Route eighty-three Kingery Highway. It's on the west side of the highway. Uh, as you know, Route eighty-three is a heavily trafficked. Four-lane road in most places with some places for turning. Um, we are proposing a conditional use for a planned development on a twenty-four point four-five acre parcel or parcels. Um, we have a north parcel, which is to the right on this, the orb and a south parcel to the left.
When I interrupt your voice, I don't screw up. You've introduced one and two, do you want to go through all of them or just admit it all at once?
Yeah, um, exhibit three is the aerial, which will you have in front of you. Exhibit four is a traffic study. Exhibit four A is a two-page supplement to the traffic study. Exhibit five is the landscape plan that you have. Exhibit six is, uh, the narrative that I submitted. And which I'll try not to go word for word by any stretch, but I know you can read it. And exhibit seven is, um, the dark skies ordinance of the county. Because that's something that the Forest Reserve is asking us to do, so I wanted to put that in front of you and say we're willing to do it. But we'll talk about that as we go along.
Okay, exhibits one through seven will be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the northern portion is eight point one five acres, and I'll call that the north parcel. So the southern portion is sixteen point three acres. Both parcels are under the single ownership and control of Chin Maya. Um, there is an exception and, uh. We've taken into account some of the comments and that exception, we're not seeking forty-seven feet. We're only seeking a forty-foot height exception, so four zero, so only a force four foot height, um. Extension over the ordinance.
All right, we'll take that as an amendment showing that it's been corrected to forty feet or. You changed it to a forty feet, except your request?
Thank you, sir. Um, we did have an open house for the neighbors. Honestly, while we hand delivered something to every one of them within the two hundred and fifty feet or anybody who was contiguous, no one showed up. I spent a couple hours just talking to my, you know, to my clients, so, uh. The north parcel currently contains a one-story, ten thousand five hundred square foot religious building. Uh, it is used for. Multiple uses, uh, including services, education, et cetera. Uh, that building would remain. The ancillary buildings would be demolished. And Chin Maya is proposing a seventeen thousand nine hundred square foot, one-story addition. Uh, there is a basement to this building, so I wanted to make it very clear. It's not, it's just one-story height, but there is, um, additional space underneath. Uh, the interesting thing is, one of the conditions we're willing to utilize is we won't require or suggest is. We will not, while both buildings get taken into account for parking. There is no need to utilize both buildings at the same time. They have separate uses and the mission has agreed that they would not use both the old building and the new building at the same time. Uh, the new building will have pretty much very similar purposes, mostly for, for education and, um, ser- services. But, so we will not have an increase of additional people coming in. This is not meant to. You know, it's a very limited, obviously. Uh, religious organization. It's not like, you know, the Catholics where we just keep, keeping, pushing people and pushing people in.
Do you see a problem that that became a condition?
No.
Okay.
Um. The extra space, as I said, we're not increasing the number of people. The number of permanent parking space on the northeast parcel is actually being increased from one two to one eleven. Um, the street and parking lot spaces suggested on the south parcel would also, um. Be able to utilize for any needed additional parking on days of services. Chin Maya is proposing a ninety-foot or ninety-space grass parking lot. Uh, which they currently use that area already for access, and it's only used about four to five times a year for major holidays. Uh, things like Mother's Day, you know, big family event days. Uh, so it's not, it's just overflowed and, um, it's consistent with the previous practice that's been going on here for the last twenty, thirty years. I'm gonna go to the aerial just to kind of get an overview of the area real quick. Uh, but then we'll come back to the site plan. South parcel is adjacent to zoned R five property in the county. Excuse me right here, I apologize, I can't see from the side. Um, which is primarily attached dwelling units. And then there's properties on R six slightly to the south. The southeast, these are real ones, you can see in white here. Those already have a height of approximately forty feet already, so we're not increasing the height in the area. Um, and what you'll see when we go through the numbers is we're actually. Going to, even though we're next to R five, R six, we're going to be much less dense than R five allows. Now, we are R four, I understand that, but with the conditional use and when you see the whole amount of property we're using in the green space. We're maintaining, uh. You know, it's really not a very dense development by any stretch when you see what we, what the R five allowed. Um, the south parcel is currently used as a meeting space for religious. Uh, this space right here currently exists. And it's currently used as a retreat and religious study meetings. And we call that the Religious Education Center. It is a conditional use in R four, so we're not asking, and that is already in existence, we're not asking for any relief for that. Uh. And it's located on one point one acres. And it's recently been. Uh, fully modernized inside as no additions, et cetera, but just modern, it's not been updated from where it was. Um, under the proposal at the moment, as I think, I think it was in the notice. The south parcel would also be utilized for up to ten attached and detached. Single-family dwelling units and a fourteen thousand square foot commercial building. So you'll see, I think it's always the D one, those are all the suggested attached or detached, excuse me, single-family homes. And then the, where the circular is. Those are what we might call townhome kind of development, two-story buildings. Uh, again, single-family attached. The. Uh, kind of open white to the south side, that would be more a condominium type of, of our condominium box, a complex. And that's where we're suggesting, we're requesting a forty-foot height. Not for anything else except that building. Um, and as you can see on the aerial. That's gonna be up at the north southeast corner, southwest corner. It doesn't really run up to any of these. Uh, townhomes directly. You'll be able to see it from, don't get me wrong, but it's not directly backing up on top of those towns. So, um, the fourteen thousand square foot commercial building. Is. No additional signage is planned for that. If there is any signage, it would be only monument and what is normally allowed. But the orientation, as you will see, the access is actually from inside the development. You might go, well, why is that, right? This is really intended to be accessed. It, it's really intended for the most part to be utilized by the residents. We're hoping, I think, to have a, uh. A grocery store, little grocery store is too big a word, but kind of like a little market, especially for the types of food that this religion utilizes and. You know, it's a special, uh, special diet, things they can and can't eat. So the thought process would be a market there, maybe a dry cleaner, just something more kind of local uses. We're not really focusing on trying to bring in outside, uh, people to this development. And when I say outside people, I mean people just driving on Route eighty-three. Uh, one of the questions that I know that Reg asked originally is. Is this development going to be limited to people of a certain religion? Obviously, I think you all know, we can't, that's not something that's allowable under the law, nor is it something we're going to do. However, I think realistically, the marketing is going to be towards people, the first marketing is going to be towards people. Of the Hindu faith, of the Chin Maya, um. Religious organization, because the thought process is, especially people as they retire, they're closer to the church, they're closer to all of this, and it becomes kind of a religious community in and of itself. But if someone who is faith-based wants to be there, or anyone else wants to be there, they're obviously not gonna say no. But the goal is to really give people of this faith as they get older or retire, a place to be close to their faith is. We get, as we age. Um, and hence, these people will. In some respect, I understand there'll be more traffic coming in on a daily basis. On the Sundays, when the service is going in. You'll see a lot less traffic on Rowdy coming in off Rowdy three, because these people are already here. As I, as I think was said earlier, residential of the subject property has three different types of units. I talked about townhomes, type of attached, single-family, this ten single-family and then the condominium style. The single-family homes are probably expected to be about twenty-seven hundred square feet. The attached two-story dwelling units will be about twenty-one hundred square feet. And then there'll be twenty-nine attached condominium type units, a three-story building. Uh, and as I said, those dwell homes are three stories because you have a grand mansion in the first story and then two-story on top of it. Let's talk about density for a second. The density of the residential portion of the subject property is five point four units per acre. Uh. Hence why you see a lot of green space, a lot of open space. If it was R five, R five would allow eight point seven units per acre. So it's not quite, it's about sixty percent of what would be allowable if we rezoned into R five. And obviously, it's right next to R five, that would be a rezoning that would make some sense. Uh. The property, if it was to R six, which is directly to the south. That would allow fourteen point five units per acre, so we're about a third of that, uh, maybe a little more. My math's not good, but probably thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent. So, um. The most restricted floor ratio allowed under R four zoning is point two five. Our floor ratio is going to be. Uh, point two five, and if you were to go to R five and R six, uh, R five. R six is actually point five, I think R five is point two five as well. So it's not a development that's meant to be very dense, it's not a development that's meant to change the neighborhood. It's really, uh, very kind of a conservative type of development. At this time, I will introduce Cyrus Ravetna, uh, who is our architect, and he's gonna talk a little more about it. And then we'll keep moving.
Hi there. Uh.
Excuse me, can you state your name and spell your last name, please?
First name is Cyrus, last name Ravetna, that's B R O N A, V is in Victor, E T N A. From Ravetna Architects, who are the architects who did the master plan and the design of the architecture. Uh, Phil did a great job of introducing you to the project, I don't have too much else to add. I'll just emphasize that it is very low density. Um, there's, uh, as we said, I believe, um, seventy-one dwelling units total. And this is for mostly elderly people, so. Planning on, uh, the homes, for example, are two-bedroom. Uh, primarily, there will be two people living there and guests would be, be coming as well. Uh, we thought very carefully about the, the neighbors and the design of the complex. To make it suitable for the neighborhood, the site, and also for the community themselves. Uh, the high point of the site is over here. Uh, and then there's sort of a stream or something over here, so that's the low point of the site. Um, and, um, again, we're, we thought very carefully about the, the architecture and the design.
Just one quick question, just for the record. Then by your statements, you agree with the statements of council, correct?
I do, absolutely. Thanks.
Um, I'm gonna ask Steve Corcoran from Erickson Engineering to discuss, uh, he did a traffic study, which is exhibit four. And then a supplement, which is exhibit four A. Uh, I will tell you the difference real quick. Exhibit four was, uh, did not include the commercial building in front. So we asked him to revise it, he wasn't aware of the commercial building when he did the first exhibit four. So that's what the two-page supplement is, it's just adding in the commercial parcel.
Thank you, uh, my name is Stephen Corcoran, C O R C O R A N. I'm Director of Traffic Engineering at Erickson Engineering and prepared the traffic study information, uh, before you tonight. Um, for our traffic study, we did like any traffic impact study we've done, uh, before. Where we go out, look at the roadway system, identify number of lanes, traffic control. Did traffic counts out there and then look at what the development is being proposed and generate traffic for that as science of the roadways and then see how. Traffic works when the development's in place. Um, as been mentioned, there's two parcels, the north parcel, the existing religious facility. Uh, that primary traffic condition is on a Sunday, as it mentioned, we did not analyze that. We concentrated on the AM and the P M peak hour. Um, you know, again, they have several hundred people coming in and out of the, the north lot on a Sunday, and it's been working pretty well for the last. Twenty or thirty years, I think, as Phil has mentioned. So we did a traffic study for the proposed residential and commercial, um. Development, and we did traffic counts, uh, out there on Route eighty-three. At the frontage roads entrances as well as the bluff. Now, this project's been going on for a little while, so those counts were from, uh, twenty twenty-two. We did check, uh, with counts that I dot did last year, twenty twenty-three, and the I dot counts are actually lower than ours from twenty twenty-two, so. Uh, we feel those are still good counts to use, um. Given that I got more recent counts were less. We then went out and, um. Did trip generation estimates, as has been mentioned, there's seventy-seven total dwelling units of three different mixes. And we would be generating roughly thirty-eight trips in and out in the morning and forty-eight in the evening peak hour. Um. And again, that's being conservative, that's sort, that's assuming typical residential type uses. We did not make any, uh. Reductions for the elderly, as it's mentioned, that's probably the more primary user of the salt and. But we use regular residential rates. And the same thing for the shopping center, as it's mentioned, the shopping center itself. Is probably gonna be more oriented toward the community itself, so it's not gonna be your typical shopping center with a convenience store, dry cleaners. Uh, whatever, uh, this someone's gonna be pulling in off of Route eighty-three, but we didn't assume that, we assumed their trip generation. Um, was a normal shopping center, which is thirty-three trips in the morning and up to ninety-three trips in the afternoon. Um, but then we went ahead and did traffic assignments. Uh, to the, the two primary entrance points, we have the right and right out. Over here, at the north end of the property, north is toward me. Um, very few people are gonna be using that, I mean, I, we probably just see people going south, I might turn into here. As opposed to using the south entrance, which kind of lines up with the internal entrance, uh, to the development. Uh, this is a right and right out, this is full access. Uh, meet the. It's hard to see from this aerial, but the landscape median ends right there, just before the driveway. There is a median out on Route eighty, a paved median, so people can go in northbound and turn left into development and pull off, uh, out of the through lane. And have a space to wait, you know, in safety before they make their left turn in. Uh, we have one lane in, one lane out, that's the existing condition. Um. And it's under stop sign control, so people can make a right or a left out of there. Um, Route eighty-three obviously is a busy road, so sometimes people have to wait a little bit to make the left turn. Um, that's not, uh, unusual for basically any unsignaled driveway on a state highway. Um, but they also can do a two-part, what we call a two-part maneuver, if they're, they can cross the southbound traffic, because now we do have a median there. They can wait and then hit the gap in the northbound traffic, so they have two options, either making a traditional left turn. Or make the turn where you, uh, take a two, what we call a two-step left turn. Um, in terms of, uh, bluff road, and we'll just talk about bluff road, it's. Uh, very heavily traveled intersection, overall, the intersection works at, uh, an acceptable level of service. However, there are some movements at the intersection during peak hours that, uh, operate poorly, particularly the northbound left turn, the eastbound. Uh, right turn because of their very heavy volumes, so those work less pure, but. At all intents and purposes, this development is really not gonna have an impact on how a bluff road intersection works. Um. This intersection that we're, you know, our main entrance to the, the development is really just like any other unsignaled residential driveway. Along, uh, Route eighty-three in this area, you can see we have much larger residential developments with the access. We have this very, very large multifamily development that has several access points on the neural, unsignalled with. Left turn lanes and stop signs, you know, to make lefts out, so. What we're doing is now is basically very similar to what's being done some north, it just started to almost probably less intense, so it's less easy, or it's easier to make. Um, in conclusion, uh, we're making, uh, in terms of roadway improvements, we're not recommending any, because right now the frontage road. During the weekday has nominal amount of traffic there, I know there's the one resident that was here. Uh, we've probably counted a couple of their cars going in and out of the, the frontage road. Um, and with the, the religious facility not having, uh. AM and PM activity during the weekday, again, we're just adding. Some traffic to basically a roadway that has no traffic, very minimal traffic now. So we're not recommending any improvements, we feel the intersection could be safe, particularly because there is an existing paved median on Route eighty-three. Thank you.
What was your part of these statements? Um, are you aware of any significant history of accidents going in and out of the site with the three or four hundred people coming on Saturdays?
Sundays, yes, no. Um, we, uh, uh, again, we've helped with some of the planning for that, uh. And so we tend up in talks about how it works and the, the, uh. Chin Maya uses folks to help control that traffic, uh, to make it smooth, slow, uh, flow, sorry, flow smoothly. And, uh, I'm not aware of any traffic congestion or traffic safety issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Um. Try, uh, we also have the landscape architect to be here if you have any questions, I don't think there's really a reason for him to testify, but, uh, he's here, case, just in case. Um, as you know, DuPage County zoning ordinance treats planned developments as a conditional use in R four. Planned developments are usually treated as a special use for zoning purposes, and courts have historically analyzed planned developments that were listed as special or conditional use in the zoning ordinance under the standards for special use. That takes us to Living Word, which you've heard about way too many times in the last twenty years, how long you've been on this board. There's a little section in the narrative about it, if you have questions, but we think that we meet the Living Word standard. Um, I'm gonna go through real quick, in exhibit six, I listed the special use standards, I'm not gonna go through every one of them. They're in writing, they're in the evidence, but I do wanna kind of talk about a few things real quick. Just to kind of orient you on what we have here. Northern border of the subject property is ordered, uh, let's call it the northeast, right, yeah. Uh, by Saddle. I don't know if you know what that is, but Saddle was, is Eric Saddle Homes, kind of baby after he retired. And, uh, it is a, uh, spiritual institute, I guess is probably the best way to put it. They have no objection, they're actually supportive of it, we met with them, and they are supportive. Up here you have some, you know, nice homes. But they're already pretty much sheltered by the existing landscaping that's gonna stay in place, and they're not really much changed to where they are. They're gonna see a very nice building instead of, uh, probably an older building, they'll see a more modern, nice building. And, but it'll still only be one story. So, uh. West, getting confused because I went backwards on this thing, but is the Forest Reserve District. You have comments from the Forest Reserve, let me just kind of go through those real quick. They want the walking path to at least five feet from the property line, we have no problem with that. Uh, they want us to be che- careful of the plant species, and they gave us a list of things they'd like to see changed, mulled grass, those are all acceptable to us. Uh, grading and runoff, they were concerned, as I think we heard from, uh, Highway Commissioner. That the grading and runoff would go this way, you've heard earlier that the high point is actually here, obviously. Here in this all the time, we have to comply with stormwater, we have to comply with, get a SWIP permit and comply with the I E P A regs. That's not something that can happen, uh, and we will comply with all that. Lighting, uh, we will. They asked about the dark skies initiative, we will comply with that, that's exhibit seven, the ord- DuPage County ordinance is exhibit sky, or the, uh, dark skies initiative. As you will see, it's not really a very thick ordinance. So. So that's nothing we're not used to, and then no use of coal tar products or asphalt ceilings. Again, easy enough to do, people agree to that as well. To ease the subject property is boarded by Route eighty-three, which is fully divided, as we talked about, and in longer sized residential lots. The eastern half, approximately of the southern property of the border. South property. Is our five zone attached townhomes, with a single family home over here, which has no objection. And what is approximately, that home is approximately one hundred and ninety-five feet from the subject property. So it's, it's a good distance, it's got a nice setback besides the setbacks, we are meeting all the setbacks. So all the required setbacks of an R four, we're meeting. The entire west, okay, we talked about that. In between the two parcels is single family homes on R four. Again, we've been in constant contact with her. She, we have not heard any objection, in fact, I don't believe there, I'm pretty sure there is none. And she's approximately one hundred and twenty-five feet that home from the southern parcel border. So there's really not, again, plus the setbacks. So again, that part, that home is pretty far away and is, you know, going back up to two-story townhomes. That goes to, I'm sorry, number one of the special use standards in harmony with the general purpose and the ten of the. Chapter will not be injurious to the neighborhood, that's a matter. And as, so, given the fact that these are. Similar to the property surrounding it, there's really no, going to be no effect on. On a general welfare, or they kind of, or, and there isn't really. This day, as you probably heard, comprehensive plan is so old, I don't think anybody really thinks it needs much at this point, because we haven't updated it in, I think, thirty years. However, with the amount of managed available land. And building in the vicinity, due to the fact that this proposed development is already on Route eighty-three, consistent with the surrounding uses. And the lack of density, this is not going to have an effect. This whole area is kind of mishmash, as you saw, one of the two parcels I discussed, you have a very large apartment complex. This is, you know, this goes from apartments to. To a church, to a single family, to multifamily or assisted attached dwellings. And over here is kind of a mishmash of residential as well. So. That in and of itself talks to the issue of no real change in property values, because. It's consistent with the mishmash of uses that already exist. You heard Mr. Corbin talk about. Route eighty-three and the traffic. His belief as a engineer that there is no, there is no safety concern. I know you're going to hear from some of the people that they believe there is. Mr. Corbin, in his professional opinion, it believes there is not. And it is also very similar, as you heard, to the same kind of entrances that are occurring all the way up and down Route eighty-three, just because of its nature of it. Number five, there's an increased potential for flood damages, we already talked about that. The stormwater ordinance and wetland requirements, we will comply with. The. Issue that Public Works mentioned, I think the chair mentioned it as well. And said, we will deal with that at the building permit stage, we will obviously not be able to build on top of DuPage County public utilities. We would have to be able to remove the buildings. But this, as you know, is a preliminary, it's a planned development. This is not a final, final design at this point. The fire protection district, I know they did not have comments, but they are here, they have some concerns, I want to, I don't want to. Ignore those. One of which I know they've had some problem in the site, we're trying to deal with some of that as well already beforehand. I know there is a concern about the water pressure needs to be, water supply needs to be checked. Obviously, that's going to happen at the building permit stage, no one's going to let us to build without those kinds of things, the road with. We believe we're wide enough, if not, there is enough room on the site. Either shrink some of the stuff or move it, it's not a big deal to move to, if they need four more feet on a roadway. There's enough land here to obviously do that. There may be other concerns, but those are the ones I heard. I know they have some concern about grass parking, getting access to it, it's something that's occurred throughout the history of the project or the building as it is. In sum, this project meets the standards for conditional use in the ordinance. As presumed to be acceptable on their living word. We would ask that you go to recommend approval of this conditional use to the county board and development committee, and we're here for any questions you may have.
All right, if this, right prior to the board asking questions, are there anybody that's here from the public that wishes to speak today? You figured out, now we have three, four, five. All right, what I think we'll do is we'll let the speakers get up and speak, and that way if the board has. Questions that would come of that also, we'll then go back to the board. The ones that want to speak, would you stand or raise your right hand and be sworn in?
This is Joseph Petrich, I'm viewing this via Zoom. And I may have a couple of things I'd like to add, so I'll. Take your oath while I'm here online.
Okay, everybody have the right hands raised? You solemnly swear affirm the testimony about to give at this class now here will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
All right, before we begin, let me just give you some of the ground rules. When you go up to speak, would you state your name, spell your name, say where you live with your eyes to this property? We give a little bit more time and deference to the ones that live right on top of it. If you feel the need. To make a specific comment, please start with. You're either in favor of it, against it, or you live, you're neutral, you have questions. Having said that, if the person in front of you speaks, you feel the same way. You don't feel, don't feel the need to reiterate it, you can say you agree to it and it stands the same way. It's been our practice to normally start with an organization or a group, but I think we'll start with the fire department. And then you can decide as we get from there.
Last name is Mulligan, M U L L I G A N. I'm the director of fire prevention for the tri-state fire protection district. We are the fire department for the petitioner's project location. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak about this petition. Unfortunately for us, our first notice of this project came from the county regarding the meeting notification for tonight. Being here tonight, we learned quite a bit more from the presentation by the petitioner's attorney. And other members. I did have a brief conversation this morning with the architect, Mr. Revetta. And he shed some light on the project. Our main. We're not in favor of the project at this time, raising our objection. And and for. The main reason being that we've not had enough information to digest, to make. Any accurate decisions on the impact for the fire district. Our closest station is not far from the Shemaya Mission property, we are very familiar with it. We did establish some communication with the property managers today that we've not had great success with in the past. So there was a concern about expanding the property and the use when we had some difficulties already. I noted some of the things that we heard discussed tonight, this is the first time we've heard of. They've been parking cars for over twenty years on grass, and I don't believe that's an approved parking space. It's just been a practice of the property management or owners. We talked about traffic study, but we didn't study on Sunday, if I'm hearing, not hearing correctly, please correct me. We didn't study on Sundays when it's the primary use of the property. And we're going to add twenty-five acres of development shortly, just short of twenty-five acres of development. We're using Shemaya staff as traffic aids for people who degress the property. So I'm not sure how that impacts the the study and the impact of additional traffic. Especially if we've not studied it on Sunday. When I spoke to the architect, I elaborated that when you park cars on grass, if the car started on fire. We have to be able to get to them on a surface that will hold an eighty thousand pound fire truck. So he took that into consideration, I don't know if that's going to revise the plan, but there may be some changes to the plan as it goes forward. We learned today, this morning, in the conversation, it sounded like there was no commercial building, even though the petition said there was going to be. And now we're talking about a fourteen thousand square foot commercial building. Which appears to have been started already. So I'm not sure why we're doing a zoning hearing, the building's already being constructed. But they can answer that at appropriate time. I think the big problem for us and why we're objecting to be brief is that there's confusion, there's a lack of information. And that's the basis, because we don't know the impact on the fire district wholly, at this point, that's the basis of our objection. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Martin, M A R T I N. My first time doing this, I apologize for this. I am the person that brings bright smack and wobble. So I do have a couple of concerns. As stated by the fire department, on Sundays. There is street parking, people are going on the street in the front and all through that, all, all the time. There's, there's, it's every Sunday, it's not just four times a year, it's every Sunday. They have been going up and up in like close to my driveway. I did not, in speaking with them. Prior to here, they did explain the whole situation about the residential, but did not explain the commercial at all. I was not aware of that and I, with the traffic, I don't think that would be an ideal situation for a commercial there. For myself, coming out of the, the house right there, coming out to the, the right in front of their area. It, right now, I mean, there's nobody, I have no neighbor, you know, the only neighbor is the Shemaya mission. Having that amount of cars coming out, seventy-four buildings coming out of one little area. It's going to be traffic. And a little concerned about if there's any type of emergency, natural disaster, anything that would be a big concern for me. And also that, again, my house is right there, there was, the, the description of the driveway coming around through the residential. Comes right up against my property with cars kind of coming, headlights coming right into my, my house. Throughout, parking into that area, so it's, that's a concern.
Why do you dream?
Hi, good evening, my name is Joanne Krypel, K R Y P E L. I live over in this area here on the other side of eighty-three, just north of the space. I am also a member of the CCSD one eighty school board. So my, my question is a little bit about that, I'm neutral on the property. I just, I have a couple of questions. The, the mission, I am assuming, will be selling these properties to the public. And the public or whoever buys those properties will own the land it sits on. Is that true? Or is it a land lease kind of?
Why don't you just put your questions out, and give us a chance to respond? If we do it one question at a time.
Okay, that's one, and if they are going to. Their tax-exempt organization. And if the folks who are not, who are going to own those, those homes and those townhomes. Are not going to actually own the land, what will, what will the property taxes be? Because as the school board, we will be taking in kids that is in our school district. And we want to ensure that the tax base will be there to support any increase in the number of students. Does that make sense? Did I say it right? Okay. That was the one thing. Another question I have is the condo parking, or is that, that underground? I just, I couldn't find it on the site map. And I did want to talk about the traffic study slightly, but you want to talk about traffic instead? Okay, that's really all I had for questions.
Hello, my name is Amanda Frankel, F R A N K E L. I am the president of the Board of Education for CCSD one eighty. We are the district that would be absorbing any families that may be moving into the area. I know you said it's primarily retirement, but you really can't guarantee that, correct? So we absorb the children and we welcome all children, we're a public school, so we're happy to have them, and we welcome our neighbors. We do have a couple of things that we're thinking about, and it mostly involves traffic at this point. So this community is apartment here, our school is here, by the way, this is us here. Our community is here, it's apartments up here, it's condos right here, so it is kind of mixed-use land. There has been, I, I, I differ a little in my opinion with the traffic study that you've. Put out there, only because we're going to be running school buses for this area, should you have children there. There is currently, there are currently a lot of accidents that happen either here. At this, at this area right here, it's just south of the car wash, at that entrance and there, and then also down here at Bluff Road. Bluff Road is a hazard already, it's already a hazard. The speed limit here is fifty-five miles an hour. And there is, for this entire complex, there is not a single traffic light at which they can exit onto Route eighty-three as it stands. So it's already a game of frog or chicken to get out of this area. And if we are trying to, if we have a bus running here from your area that you're proposing. Going northbound to come back to our school, because it would have to go northbound, there's not an exit to Bluff Road, I believe. Okay, so if there's not an exit to Bluff Road where they could actually circle around the backside and come in our, our school district this way. They would have to, that school bus would have to actually turn northbound across traffic. And that would be significantly dangerous, I think, for students. It might help if we could get a traffic light put in right here. So it would be just north of your area, if you could help facilitate that somehow. I don't know how you do that, good luck, because we've tried. But if you could, if we could get a traffic light here, it would actually slow down that traffic significantly and actually make it safer for people to cross. I'm not actually, when you were talking about a turn lane that happens down here further. I, I don't actually think that exists yet, so maybe it's something that's in the planning stages. But I believe there's one, there's one up here, there's one up here near where the Chicago Waffles is. There's a protected turn and there's a protected turn here. But I, I don't actually believe that there is one where you, where you pointed that out, I'm not sure.
But you could tell us, did you take a left out of here?
Yeah, so.
Well, I think, you know, Phil can clarify it, I thought it was that you would pull in the middle of the street. It was open there and then you converge in, I don't know if it's a dedicated.
If you're going northbound, a school bus couldn't fit there, right, to turn in there, they couldn't fit in that short median area. So that turn would be dangerous if they were coming south, from the south, because we do service this area too. That is also, the Bluff Road area is also part of our district, so if, if our bus had to come up there and turn for any reason. It might be potentially dangerous for them, so. A dedicated turn lane would be, a dedicated actual turn lane would, would help that. But if we could slow the traffic down between the street that is up here, which is Ninety-first Street, where the school exists currently. And Bluff Road, that area, people accelerate, it's downhill, it's blind part of it, it's incredibly dark, which I know we all appreciate the dark. We don't want a whole lot of streetlights, but it's, it's a very dangerous fast area, so. That is our concern, but again, we welcome your children and we hope that we have a great relationship with you. Thank you.
My name is Mary Antonioli, A N T O N I O L L I. I live at sixteen west five eighty Nielsen Way, which is. Right here, this is my home. Right where Saddle World is, that's me, and the second one on the right. I'm amazed that other people aren't here, but we didn't have much time to get together. There is no turnaround here. There's nothing there for people. There's nothing there for people to turn on. That's dangerous. I had a son, this is years ago, that was hit on his bicycle going up to Bluff Road, going on the trails in the forest preserve by a car. So more traffic on a Sunday when kids are out using the forest preserve. It's, there's, it's too much. It's too much traffic. Putting a light at Mockingbird. I don't know. They, when there's the things going on at the center, they use Nielsen Lane as a turnaround. When they're coming from the south, because there's no way to turn in to that project, they come, turn into Nielsen Lane, drive all the way around the cul-de-sac, and back out again. And on days, and I'm sorry, I know it's very busy, on days when there's no parking, they park up and down Route eighty-three on the shoulder of the road. By your house, then, yeah, there's a lot of traffic. And I have, there have been several accidents where people have died on Route eighty-three right there. So those are my main concerns, and the taxes. You know, if it's going to be a religious center, who absorbs all the taxes?
That's not something that's with that.
I know.
Considering, so I made it abundantly clear for the record, so we don't have a problem down the road on that.
But I am, I'm very concerned about the traffic and where the cars are going to go. It is a four-lane highway, and people fly. Semis are coming down the hill after ninety-first Street. I know because I have to use the shoulder to turn onto Nielsen Lane, so I don't get hit. It's a main, it's a main road. It gets across the rivers. Those are my main concerns. Thank you.
All right, the, I guess the one that's left from the uh audience would be Joseph Petrich, is it?
All right, Joseph. My name is Joseph Petrich. I live in Burr Ridge. I'm not in close proximity to this petition, but I'm actually one of the plan commissioners that was at the meeting yesterday. And the main purpose that I want to say right now is I heard, and I may have misunderstood or misheard, but the council indicated that we asked what religion this facility was for. I don't think that was ever asked. I've never heard that kind of a question asked in any of our public hearings or any other deliberation. So did I, if I heard that correctly, I don't remember anyone saying that. And I'd like to make that clear for the record in case that gets in there. The second only question I do have is, um, one of the commissioners asked about signage, and we didn't hear yesterday that this commercial center was strictly for the residents and for the uh assembly members of the uh facility. Um, so I, there won't be any signage then for this commercial center? Off of Route eighty-three, I assume?
Yes, sir, that.
I'm sorry?
He will address it when he answers the questions.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I'll start with the board. Why don't we start with uh Chairman Carthol, and then we'll go to Jim, John. Bob? I guess we won't go with Bob. Oh, his hands up.
Just my mouse.
All right, Jim, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good right now. Thank you.
Anybody on the board?
This is really two two separate pieces of property here. Actually, uh it's like it's different entities. They're they're doing one's apartments and another one kind of a church deal. It's kind of, and it's not connected together as far as the land in between is is not their land. It's not connected together.
Okay, then uh we'll answer the questions and uh do a closing.
Um, so Mr. Murphy's question, and Paul's much better at this than I am. This is uh, we're allowed, because they are under same ownership, to do it as one development. That's allowed under the ordinance. Any questions? Paul, much better than I am. I'll just say it again. Signage, and let me start with Mr. Petrich, because I'll go backwards. That's how my notes go. Um, Mr. Petrich, if you, if I said that, it is not what I meant. No one mentioned religion last night, to my knowledge, at the hearing. I was there at the plan commission. Uh, one of your staff uh just asked us if, I think asked county staff whether it was going to be restricted to a specific religion.
That's what you commented on. You couldn't do it.
That's what I was trying to comment on. If Mr. Petrich, if I said that and you took it the other way, I apologize, but no, I I understand no one is asking what religion.
Um, I I don't, in fact, I don't remember any discussion of religion at all. Uh, the only question I recall, and I'm not sure why the commissioner asked, but he asked if there were going to be any mental health um uh issues addressed there, which is non-negotiable.
That was not, and the statement I was making was not based on last night's hearing, but based on a staff comment to county staff directly. So I'm not, no, no one with the plan commission, I agree with you, said anything like that. So I just want to make that very clear, because I agree with you.
And I don't think anybody from Burr Ridge would have made that statement. You said county?
Yeah, it is accepted. Nobody would make that statement from Burr Ridge.
I was there last night.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, the members of the audience confirms that.
Okay, uh, as far as parking on Route eighty-three, I I'm not aware of that, but I do know that we are adding additional parking uh for the south parcel that is able to be used for this, and that's what we are going to tell the people to use, not parking on the frontage road and not parking on Route eighty-three. Uh, as far as signage, let's skip that for a second. There is no intent, there's no sign being requested. There's no any signage, as I think I said earlier, would be a monument sign that's allowed under the ordinance. We're not seeking any large signage uh related to this commercial site. The uh the parking for the condominium is underground. This is a three-story unit. The first, the under, the parking will be underground at the bottom of the condo process, and there will be enough parking for those, that building included. Um, right now, it is intended that the individuals, I think, will own the property. I I know real estate taxes are not an issue, but I feel like I want to just clarify this for the the school district. Um, if not, there are still, all of these units are still taxable. They're just taxable at a slightly different rate. They're not taxable at the land. They're taxable as for the building. That's just how it works. So the building would still be taxable. It's not all, it's not going to be a religious use, so there's no tax exemption, if that helps you in any way, shape. Okay, the only tax exemption will be on this uh the current building, that building on the south, and then obviously the north will still, we would believe, will still be taxable.
Thank you.
Um. As far as Ms. Martin's comment about a few, I think I talked about street parking on Sundays a little bit, her question about uh the headlights, I think that's a well-taken question. Uh, we are adding additional landscaping, but we will, given that comment, add more landscaping down to that area, so that you're not seeing headlights into your house on a regular basis. I talked to the traffic in, or the landscape engine architect uh in between, so that's a good point. Thank you. Uh. I think that is it. I think the one question came about the turn lane. Yes, you were.
No, I was thinking more with the fire department and the grass, and if they had to get out during different weather conditions, they wouldn't be able to get out to address a fire.
Yeah, and that's something I think, uh, obviously, we're going to have to deal with with the county and the fire protection district as we go forward. I know we've talked about the possibility of permeable pavers, if that, if if it's something that's necessary. Uh, that's something we heard, you know, and I'm not blaming the fire protection district. We heard today for the first time and weren't aware of. Uh, but it's something we will look at uh to make sure that we want fire safety as well as they do. So that's something we'll be proceeding with going forward. Uh, I don't think anybody's going to let us build anything that's not in compliance with the codes that are necessary for the fire protection district. I hope that helps. Uh, that's really, and I've kind of already summarized before, if you have any further questions or concerns, but go ahead, please. Um, our landscape architect would like to just talk for a second. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Laura. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have a Mr. But I apologize.
Regular.
People for me.
Uh, yeah, just to uh address some of the questions as well, the correct the condo parking is under the condo building, uh, and we have enough spaces for everybody in that condo building. There's been a lot of questions about, you know, safety and so forth, and I just want to emphasize that we're increasing the parking significantly. So we're increasing the parking by over a hundred and thirty-three spots total. So um hopefully, that will resolve a lot of the issues that I heard from the community uh with the increase in in parking. And the only thing I think we should point out is that the members of the community are the ones who are going to be living here. So they're going to be reducing the traffic uh on those Sundays. So, you know, if they're living there, they're not going to be driving there. They're going to be walking there, and then we specifically designed some walking paths for them to go from residential development over to the um the that area over here. So we're actually going to be reducing the amount of traffic in parking, because it's the same members that are currently using the building will now be living closer to the building, therefore reducing the traffic in the site. Um. And again, uh, if this site were to be bought by a developer, I can guarantee you it would be much more dense than what we've designed here. Uh, this is specifically designed to be very low density uh for the community itself, with lots of hard land and lots of open space. So the density is much lower than it would be if it was bought uh by a developer. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. But I I just want to, you made a very good point. I just want to kind of point this out real quick. Each of these units has its own park. So you see, there's parking up here for the commercial. It's enough for the commercial. You have parking built all around the site and in the street, so that there, we're adding additional parking, not taking away. Um, we don't expect any additional traffic to the to the church or the mission. Um, so we're, the goal was to try and resolve that. We need that additional parking because it's a bigger building now, but as I said before, we're not going to utilize both of them at the same time. So, hope that helps, and that's.
Just one quick question, and I hope the rest of the board members got to read it. I didn't get to read the traffic study we had tonight. Did you take into account in your traffic survey that a lot of the people that are, will be living there will not be driving on Sunday, or is that something that was not taken into account?
Well, since I did not do a traffic study for the religious uh activity on Sunday, so no, we did not take that into account.
Do you want, will you be getting before the hearing, uh, an addendum to cover it?
Um, no, I really don't, because I think what this does, the fact that it's, it's what we're talking about is this will actually, we have a traffic start, we don't have a traffic study for Sundays. We know this, but that's an existing use, so we're not changing that use. Really what that, the fact of the matter is, that the people these walking from the south to the north actually creates a less traffic, so his his traffic study is conservative from that basis.
I think you covered that it's not necessary, because Sunday is already existing. So unless you up the number of people coming to service, it shouldn't change.
Thank you. That's, thank you for your time, everybody. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, then um this will be finished. Members of the public or can put written comments in up to two weeks before our uh hearing, our uh recommendation meeting. And when is that?
That's Thursday, February sixth.
February sixth, so two weeks before that, whatever that is. But if you're going to put in comments, we'd ask that you'd also send them to council here.
There there is one thing that was mentioned, and I forgot because I had a wrong sheet of paper, the question about a building being started, the construction that's going on the site, I think, where the uh Mr. Mulligan mentioned it. There is a home that is being built on the site that has already been permitted. That's the construction you're seeing. Swami's house uh was construed, was permitted back, I think, in the fall. So what they're seeing is uh construction equipment for that house that's already permitted on a separate, which will be combined into it, but right now is a separate.
All right, then we will adjourn to uh our next meeting, Thursday.